Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for June 17, 2013. As a reminder for those of you in the audience, if you have a mobile device, please put it on silent or vibrate. We do show this tonight is live on Channel 22. And if I can find my times, we do show them, let's see, Sunday and Saturday at 1:00, Sunday and Tuesday at 6:30, Thursday and Friday at 6:30. You can also see Cabarrus County Board of Education meeting on Channel 22 and the Rowan Cabarrus Commissioners, which I think the folks up in Kannapolis tend to watch because they, a lot of them are Rowan County residents also. Obviously, school's out, which is a good thing for many people. A lot of people are on vacation or coming back from the beach this week. And because of that, we don't have any scouts tonight to present our colors. However, I would ask that everyone stand and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for our invocation, we have Reverend Dan Warrens from St. James Lutheran Church. Hi Reverend, nice to have you with us tonight.
Good evening. Would you pray with me? Good and gracious God, we thank you for the privilege of living in this great nation and in this great state, in this great county and community. We pray your blessing, O Lord, this night upon all those who serve our county, those who are employed by it, and those who serve in this very room. We pray your blessing on our conversations and decisions this night, that we would make good and wise and just decisions that serve the needs of our people, that help us to live in harmony and peace. We entrust all our work to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Remain standing with me, please. Charlie Reimer was my high school principal, and a lot of people in the Concord area had him as either their principal or possibly a coach or a teacher. He passed away this past week, and he was one of those fellows that everybody knew him. And some people were a little bit concerned with him. He was a very good principal during a quite tumultuous time in our history. My husband called him Uncle Charlie whenever he got in trouble and might be a couple minutes late at school and would run by and hopefully not get in any trouble with him. But he was a really good man and a great family. And so I'd ask that you join me for a moment of silence in memory of Charlie Reimer. Thank you all. Okay, Commissioners, you have before you the minutes. We did receive those for you to look over today. There are also some changes to the agenda. So at this time, I would accept a motion to approve, for approval of the meeting minutes.
Does that move?
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the agenda, and again, there are some changes to the agenda. And I would accept a motion that we approve the agenda, including the changes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I do want to change our order just a little bit. John Cox is here with a special introduction of our new employee at the EDC. So I'd like to give you a moment to let us welcome her.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'd like to introduce Margie Bukowski, who's our new Vice President of Economic Development, and she'll be the face of Cabarrus County on the road as we work to not only help local businesses expand, but to find companies that are looking for somewhere to expand in the United States. Margie.
It's so good to be here, and I want to thank you all for this great opportunity. I'm really looking forward to it. I'm coming to you from Raleigh, North Carolina, where I've been with the Department of Commerce and as a statewide developer. And I feel very encouraged and I'm very excited about being able to see the new opportunities that are going to come to Cabarrus. So thank you very much for this, and I'm very looking forward to it.
Thanks. Thank you. We're happy to have you in Cabarrus County. I hope we'll see many more businesses come and locate here. Thank you both. First thing we have under recognitions and presentations, Dennis Testerman is here. There's Dennis. If you will come forward, please, along with your winner, and I'll let you explain soil and water conservation district, regional recognition of conservation contest winner. Welcome.
Thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm here to give you an opportunity to recognize Madeline Barfield, who is the winner of our second annual state soil and water conservation PowerPoint contest, which is sponsored by the North Carolina Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts. The theme this year, you've already, I think, heard this from previous times that I've been up here with some of the other poster and public speaking contests, is the theme was water, the cycle of life. So Madeline's entry, like the others that you've heard about previously, one at the local level, and then progressed on up to a regional contest. And then, as I've already said, she came home with the top prize at the state level. This contest is the second annual, this is the second year. And again, last year, Harris Road, a student from, Harris Road, Hannah Watson, won last year at the state level. So they're on quite a roll out there and very, very much, I think, living in the, basking in that, that good fortune that they've had. Just to kind of tie this into previous actions that you all have taken as well, the previous Board of Commissioners gave some land up for a conservation easement between Harris Road Middle School and Odell Elementary School for a restoration, stream restoration project, and that was completed, oh my goodness, it's been over a year ago now. So they're sort of living this water feature right there on their campuses and have been very involved in Big Sweep and some other things related to water there as well. You have a PowerPoint before you had a chance to see. I just wanted to draw out one, one of those slides that Madeline put together. Kids aren't just the leaders of tomorrow, they're the dreamers and doers of today. So the question is, will you do it right? So, on behalf of the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Supervisors, Madeline, we're very proud to present you this certificate. Let me just read this for everyone. For helping the state of North Carolina promote good soil and water conservation practices, this certificate is presented to Madeline Barfield. Water, the Cycle of Life 2013 State Soil and Water Conservation PowerPoint Contest. Congratulations. And if you would step forward and just tell folks, who else is here with you tonight?
I have my mom here and my teacher.
And their names are?
My mom is Lisa Barfield and my teacher, Ms. Hott.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your support that makes all this possible.
Thank you. Congratulations, Madeline. We always like to have winners in Cabarrus County. And Soil and Water District always does a good job with bringing good recognition to Cabarrus County. Next, we have recognition of Tony Harris. We would like for Mr. Harris to please come forward, and Ms. Dubois, and Commissioner White is going to help.
I wanted to start this off with, on June 3, the Public Risk Management Association named Tony L. Harris as its 2013 Public Risk Manager of the Year at the 34th Annual Conference in Tampa, Florida. The annual, the annual award recognizes a risk manager commitment to a public sector for risk management. Tony came to work for Cabarrus County in 2006 and began to develop a risk management Tony is an outstanding professional, said Dan Hurley, President of Prima. He used his expertise in risk management and risk control to build an efficient insurance and risk management program for the county. He continues to bring the county forward in preventing exposures by offering training classes along with the collaboration with EMS and transportation. No county department is an island. We all work together to accomplish the mission and goals for the county as a whole. At this time, we would like to share a video with everyone to further honor Tony and the risk management program at Cabarrus County, which was prepared by Prima and shown at the conference when he received his award.
So my job as a risk manager for the county was to develop a risk management department that would oversee the insurance, the safety compliance, and ADA compliance for the county.
Tony created the risk management position that we have now, and so he made it to how big it is and what it is today.
He's not sheltered in just the workers' comp and the insurance area and safety training, but he takes those aspects into our health insurance program, our employee clinic, and how can we interrelate assets that the county has to help us save money in different areas like insurance.
It's gone into actually not just reviewing all of our insurance policies, but also going through and reviewing every single contract that goes through the county now. Tony puts his hands on it to make sure that, from a liability standpoint, we're covered.
He goes the extra mile to make sure that he learns what the laws are and keep up with any updates. And then he shares that information with all of the employees so that we, as a county, can be successful.
Here at the county, we have over 25 different functions. We have to learn each function within the county. So one of the challenges in risk management that we face is, is making sure that we understand the laws, staying consistent with the laws as best as possible, and making sure we work with those departments and understand those departments.
He just came in here and it was a seamless transition with him fitting in with, with our staff and the inspectors and investigators, and he has just taken this program to a level that we only imagined before. So he's done a great job.
As a risk manager, he has helped everyone, not just employees, but all of the facilities, all of the amenities, everything that we have. He's helped make it a better place for Cabarrus County and general citizens, employees.
Just the whole risk management department has been changed since Tony's got here. Everything's way, way, way more efficient, and you can always get him. He's always, I mean, he always has the answer or he'll find the answer.
He works extremely hard. He is all over the place. He is one of those folks that, when you're looking for him, he's always floating around to some part of the county assisting with a project.
He has our employees' trust. So when they need something, they're, they don't hesitate for a moment to contact him, which makes him so much more effective. He doesn't have to find things out or wait till an issue comes to a head. They seek him out for advice.
He's easily approachable. I mean, he's one of us. He's not somebody that's going to come in whenever there's a problem. He's somebody there to support you throughout the daily operation and that you can bounce ideas off of without any type of fear of retribution or anything of that nature. I mean, he's there to promote a safe workplace.
I think one of the things that is Tony's strong point is the way he deals and communicates with others. He's very easy to deal with, never any kind of intimidation or anything like that, and he always talks to you, I guess, like he would want to be talked to. He's just always really friendly to deal with.
He's able to keep us safe, keep us mindful, and do it in a very respectful way, where at times, we don't even know we're being corrected.
He makes sure that we are safe and that everything is where it's supposed to be. Sometimes you may not even like what you have to do to make it work, but he is not afraid to make sure that it's done the way it needs to be done because that's his job.
There actually is some forethought now before somebody starts a program or a new building or whatever it is. They think about it, and that's because of how Tony has worked with us and tried to educate on why we're doing it, not just do it.
I personally think that it's a really difficult position to be in because people get that thing of, oh, you better ask the safety manager. But then, when you also talk with people, they have such a great feeling about him because he's such a wonderful, authentic person.
It's the nature of being a risk manager that he has to tell us where there are potentially problems. We do pick on him about that. But the best thing is, with his personality, I think he enjoys it and we all really enjoy working with him.
We're very proud of Tony and are thankful he has chosen our organization to work with, and he has been able to help us advance. We expect great things in the future.
I could say I'm still in a state of bliss, I would say, but I'm very honored, very humbled to receive this award. It's actually pushing me to learn more, to be a great example to others, but really, I'm definitely honored.
But wow, this is a national award. That's something else. It gives, I know he's very proud and we are very proud. It gives us the assurance that he knows what he's doing and, and his peers see that as well.
I can't think of anybody else more deserving. He's a hard worker. He's a dedicated worker, and I'm proud to call him a coworker.
I think there are certain careers to where you're actually called into those careers, and you accept it as a way of life. And I think Tony embodies risk management as a way of life. I mean, it's who he is. I mean, he cares passionately about the people that he works with and he works for. He cares passionately about his job as a risk manager, and I think that carries over into the job performance and the way that he accomplishes things.
I believe that risk management, we are wired differently. We see hazards, we see exposures, we find ourselves walking into buildings, looking at exit routes, even in restaurants. But we exist because we're here to help other departments perform their jobs with minimal risks as possible.
I know it may sound corny, but I feel safe with him being the safety and risk manager.
I do want to emphasize, as Mr. Downs pointed out, this is a national award. This is not a North Carolina award, and we are extremely proud of him. Mr. White.
Tony, from Public Risk Management Associations, you have been presented with the Public Risk Manager of the Year Award. Would you not be prouder of what you've accomplished, not only for Cabarrus County, but putting yourself out there and showing us how to do it and do it? Thank you. Thank you.
Tony, Tony, you don't get, you don't get away that easy.
You need to introduce. They're very important.
Yes, they're very important. They put up with me. That's my wife, Melissa, Joy.
Come on up.
Jada, Tony, and London, right here. That's my mother, right there. That's my sister, and that's my dad. So, so they're all here. Thank all of you.
Tony, this is one of the few times I've seen you speechless. I will say, we do have to be kind of careful with Tony because there's some jokes that he doesn't take too kind to. I forgot what it was. There was something and I told Pam I was going to pick on you about it, and she said, no, no, don't do that. He'll, he'll take you really seriously. Don't do that to him. Next, we have another, a retirement that is one of those bittersweet things. I don't, it's well deserved, however, we are the ones that lose, you're the one that gains because you have a lot of free time. But we do want to recognize Linda Griss on her retirement from the Cabarrus County Board of Elections. I'm not real certain what elections are going to look quite like in the future without you being there, but.
I've got a couple of words to get started. Linda came to work for us on March 2 of 1992. She has served the county 21 years as the Director of the Cabarrus County Board of Elections. She has seen many changes, such as the National Voting Rights Act, which made registering to vote easier. Two years into her tenure, she got to work on the wonderful ABC election, which occurred in Concord and Kannapolis, which would allow liquor by the drink in restaurants. Concord lost by one vote and after the recount, lost by two to three votes. One of her quotes for that is, one vote, excuse me.
No, one buy.
One buy, excuse me. See, she's still correcting me. Everybody goes through a trial by fire, and that was Linda's. I think that was her big experience when she got started. In 2000, the board started early voting, and this was really good for the voters as it provided more days for the voters to be able to come out instead of the actual election day or doing the absentee process. There are many other events and elections that have occurred over her tenure, but there is one quote from Linda that is, that I strongly agree with and that she has shared. Never give anyone an answer unless you know it's the right answer. Linda says that this is the most important thing you can do for your credibility. I totally agree with that statement, and she's lived that for the whole 21 years she's been here. We've picked on her, but she's always stuck by her guns and she's always done right, and Cabarrus County has had basically clean elections throughout the entire tenure that she's been with us. She is a dedicated employee. Most would say she's a workaholic. I totally agree with that. And it's time for her to enjoy her family and her grandchildren, and she will be truly missed.
I think you used to call it passion, but I think other people called it something else. I can't thank you all enough for the support that you all have given me through the years and what you all said about the departments, they do all work together. And I would not have been able to do my job without all the different departments helping us out. And the voters even helped us, and my staff is great. It'll go on just as it did before. Thank you so much.
Commissioner White would like to present something to you.
Yes, Linda. When we first, Commissioner Burge and I first ran, we had jet black hair. And what you took, what you did to us was just uncalled for. No. Your retirement is going to be sorely missed. For 20 years, you've been dedicated to Cabarrus County and to our citizens. And democracy starts at the election process, and you were there on the front lines. So thank you for everything you've done, and I wish you a wonderful time in retirement.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well, I'm certain that, Linda, that you have worked very hard and your staff is very well-trained. But do know that I'm sure they'll take you back as a volunteer at one of the polling sites. You probably know how to do that training already, so I have a feeling they'll be willing to sign you up. We will, we will miss seeing you in that spot. Next, we have a video, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. We showed a video last month, and I think this is an updated version that they have requested that we show.
Hello. Thanks for taking part in County Assembly Day. It was a great day. Over 200 county commissioners and county staff converged on our state capitol to represent our counties. Your involvement makes such a difference. It is important that we keep this momentum moving forward until the end of the General Assembly session.
Since the last update, the Senate passed its version of the state budget. The plan includes both positive and negative aspects for counties. For the most part, Senate leaders did not pass down unfunded mandates to counties. The Senate proposed a $100 million allocation of lottery funds for school construction. Keep in mind, however, that counties should receive $180 million. This is a concern. More concerning, however, is the elimination of the statutory guarantee that 40% of lottery proceeds go to county school capital funding. This would be an unwelcome change. There is another area that draws concern, and that is a provision that would start an unsettling precedent of making counties responsible for funding non-county employee benefit costs. In the Senate budget, counties would fund any shortfall in the volunteer fire and rescue workers' compensation payments. We estimate this one provision would cost counties statewide $6 million. We are working to correct these issues, but we need your help in relaying these concerns to your legislators.
Now that the Senate budget has passed, it is the House's turn. House budget writers have announced a three-week schedule that will conclude with a vote on the budget on June 13. That leaves only two weeks to approve a consensus budget between the House, the Senate, and the Governor. If an agreement is not reached, the Assembly must approve a continuing resolution, also known as a CR, before the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30.
Your advocacy team has been busy working on your legislative goals, many of them to help build options for our counties. One such goal would give some counties the option to publish public notices on their websites and by email instead of purchasing advertisements in newspapers. Again, it is only an option. Due to significant pressure from the North Carolina Press Association, the bill has an uncertain future. This is a situation where we will need every county to support one another to at least give them the option.
Another proposed piece of legislation that will help counties is Senate Bill 321, Containing Counties' Inmate Medical Costs. The bill has passed the Senate, and now we are working to have the bill heard in the House. This legislation will bring counties in line with state policy in capping costs charged to counties for inmate medical care. When enacted, this legislation should cause significant savings for each county. Please tell your House members to support Senate Bill 321, Containing Inmate Medical Costs.
Another NCAA legislative goal making its way through the legislative process is Senate Bill 236, Counties Responsible for School Construction. Originally a statewide bill, it has now been turned into a local bill impacting only counties that have requested the option. Once the bill passes, it will give these counties an option to have the responsibility to manage all aspects of the school building process. It will also give counties the option of managing other functions, such as maintenance agreements. Again, it is important to stress that our association's strength at the legislature rests in our unity in supporting that counties have options. It is a main point we stress at the General Assembly.
The conversation about tax reform is gaining more attention in Raleigh. However, a consensus plan between the House and Senate still seems to be far away. The House takes an incremental approach, boring the corporate income tax, flattening the personal income tax rate to 5.9%, and broadening the tax base to a limited number of services. The Senate has two plans under consideration, one of which would broaden the tax base significantly by taxing most services, including health and professional services. It would lower the county sales tax rate, modify the local sales tax distribution, but provide a transitional hold harmless for counties. It too would lower the corporate and personal income tax rates. We are still assessing the impacts to counties under all three plans. However, leaders have assured us that counties would be held harmless when it comes to revenue generation. We will continue to be involved in this debate and keep you updated as things progress.
We appreciate your taking the time to watch this update. As Lisa said earlier, it is important that we keep the momentum of advocating for your legislative goals at the General Assembly. Be on the lookout for our weekly legislative bulletins and our monthly County Lines newspaper. But when we need your direct help on an issue at the legislature, you will receive an email legislative alert or a personal email from David Thompson. Remember, it is your personal contact with your legislators that really makes a difference. If you need anything, call us directly or visit our website for more detailed information. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have informal public comments and our, give Mr. Marshall a chance to, there you go.
to, there you go. Our first person to come up is Price Crutchfield. Mr. Crutchfield.
I'd like to comment on public safety in Concord and Cabarrus County. These are numbers you never hear about. There's 11 unsolved murders in Concord, and I had to work pretty hard to get these numbers because the police were reluctant to give me the information. I wonder why. Recently, a couple of years ago, I had to go to court. I was charged with cussing on the sidewalk. Captain Scott Newell of the Concord Police Department, he broke the law and lied under oath on me in court to Judge Hamby. He told Judge Hamby, here's what he said under oath. "Your Honor, he's come into restaurants and harassed my family." Captain Scott Newell of the Concord Police Department, someone pretty high up the ladder. This is what you got over at the police department. Police lying under oath, and we've got 11 unsolved murders. There's something don't add up here. Let's spend a little less time lying under oath on people and solving these murders. Concord's a violent place. There's been some 50 murders committed in the past few years. 50. Now, again, you never hear about these numbers. It takes some idiot like me, some trail trash person like me, to come up here and educate you. Now, again, this is a police department that spends some time on school property with teachers having liquor, drinking liquor. Nobody goes to jail, and if they did, they'd just lie under oath like Captain Scott Newell did on me. They'd just lie under oath and get out of it. It's okay for the police in Concord to lie under oath. Captain Scott Newell of the Concord Police Department, he lied under oath in court on me, and not one thing's been done about it. I complained to his superiors, who told me to have a blessed day. And to this day, I hadn't had a blessed day because justice hadn't been served. What we need to do is invoke the powers of the Attorney General's Office to come to Concord, and let's investigate this Captain Scott Newell of the Concord Police. This is the same captain that had me charged prior to this with participating in a riot. The subject was rude and riotous. I've never been in a riot. Again, Captain Scott Newell's responsible for this. This guy's a lunatic. How in the world he got to be a captain is beyond me. Now, I was told that if you lie, you can end up going to the bad place when you die. Again, I just, you know, it's not, it's just not, it's a sin to tell a lie, and it's against the law when you're under oath. So, I can't legislate morality. I'm just someone that thinks that the law should apply to everybody. And Captain Scott Newell broke the law, and nothing's been done about it. We need to have something done about it in the interest of all the citizens.
Thank you. Our next guest is Adam Auerbach. Adam?
Welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is Dr. Adam Auerbach. I'm here as a concerned Cabarrus County resident, father, and principal of Wolf Meadow Elementary. I'm deeply concerned about the level of funding to the school system. I've worked as a teacher and administrator in Cabarrus County Schools since 2002, and have seen all the hard work and excellent results that the school system has produced. Throughout this past decade, the products and reputation of the Cabarrus County School System have delivered is undoubtedly one of the biggest draws to Cabarrus County, rivaling racing and Concord Mills. Countless families have moved to within our borders because of the schools for that reason alone. In reality, the schools are even more important because you can live in Mecklenburg County and still enjoy racing in the mall, but to be part of one of the best school systems around, you have to live here. And living here means tax revenue, so basically Cabarrus County Schools is the best thing we have going for us here. Cabarrus County Schools is great. We provide a great education for our students. But tonight, I'm here to give everyone kind of a warning. Rome, Persia, Egypt, all these other empires were great, but fell because they didn't take timely action. The lack of action and of putting our money, all of our money where it's best being used will have a catastrophic effect on the schools and in turn, the entire county should we not do something soon enough. It's true that we have a great school system, but we are vastly underfunded compared to other districts close in proximity, size, and demographics to Cabarrus County Schools. I'm not saying all this is all of the local leader's fault, but for years, we've been expected to do more with less. The state level keeps putting more back onto the local districts to keep funding more things, and to keep funding things at the current rate's just not going to get it done. Compound that with the fact that North Carolina is one of the lowest-paying states around and not getting any better if Raleigh keeps going the way it is. I'm concerned that the perfect storm of educational deterioration isn't going to be happening in conjunction with our community's deterioration. We'll no longer be able to keep up with the demand and keep our school system status as one of the best around. We'll try and fix it, but it might be too late at that point. Some of our schools have some serious physical facility needs. Dr. Shepherd and the school system, and Ms. Klutz and Mr. Whitkey, have asked for funds to help address some of these needs, and I urge you to fund these requests and more. I ask you, how will we expect our schools to compete with new shiny buildings and charter schools with the blazing fast technology that they have if we don't do the things to fix our schools? I encourage you to come into the schools and take a look and see the great work that's being done by all the teachers in the school system, but look and notice that some of it's being done in spite of the lack of support at the level that it should be provided. As principal of one of the older schools that has a high at-risk population, I personally invite you all out to my school to see my facility and see what I'm talking about. I'd love to walk you around and would bet many of the other principals would do the same. I know that you fund money to the school system, and those funds are put to good use, but we need more. The system's also asked for funds for salaries and supplements as well. And I'm out of time, but basically, I ask not just for me as an employee, but for my son back there and all the students in Cabarrus County Schools. We need more money. We need to put more money into the schools to help all of our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioners, the next items that we have would be the consent agenda, if you will look at that. This is what we agreed to at our work session. So, if there are no changes at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have new business. We have a number of public hearings that we have to hold tonight. The first one is based on Carolina International School, which is a charter school in Cabarrus County, and we need to hold a public hearing regarding the issuance of tax-exempt bonds. Get to that. That is page 143 in your agenda. So, at this time, Commissioners, I will open a public hearing to see if there was anyone here tonight who would like to speak for or against Carolina International Schools' consideration of the issuance of tax-exempt bonds by the Public Finance Authority. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any comments?
I would make a couple of comments. One, there's no action this board needs to take because we, the county, are not funding, borrowing any money on behalf of the Carolina International School. That is solely on their responsibility. They have saw fit to build a new building, I think, off of Poplar Tent near Cox Mill Road, and they're taking this on their own responsibility. And I've talked to several of the board members out there, and they're very excited about what they're being able to offer and the opportunities they're able to offer through this bond issuance. But the county is not issuing any bonds, is not going into debt for anything as it relates to Carolina School.
Madam Chair, we do need to adopt the resolution as required by the Internal Revenue Code.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second for the viewing of audience. It is a resolution approving the issuance of bonds not to exceed $12,950,000 of the Public Finance Authority Education Revenue Bonds, Carolina International School Series 2013A. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor of adopting the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And again, I think you were very well-stated that this is not county debt that we are issuing. We are giving them the authority to go into debt on their own accord. That's how it is. We are letting them make their decision, so. Next, we have the need for a public hearing from Emergency Management concerning the adoption of ordinance amending Chapter 34 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Cabarrus County Code of Ordinances. Do you want to speak on it first before we do the public hearing?
If you would like.
Go ahead.
We first brought this item before you in April, requesting a public hearing to amend Chapter 34 Fire Prevention and Protection of Cabarrus County Code of Ordinances as it relates to the fire tax insurance district boundaries of Coldwater, Reimer, and Concord Rule. As requested by the board, we sent letters to the property owners of the change and its impact. Maps have been on display for public view in the clerk's office as well as our office. So, at this point, we hold the public hearing.
Okay. At this time, I will open a public hearing concerning the adoption of the ordinance amending Chapter 34 Fire Prevention and Protection of Cabarrus County Code of Ordinances. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this action? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you accept a motion to adopt the ordinance. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, item three, creation of the Human Services Agency. And again, we are in need of a public hearing. The Board of Commissioners wished to create a Human Services Agency consisting of the Departments of Social Services and Transportation pursuant to SB 438. So, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the creation of the Human Services Agency? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. The action before us is to abolish the Department of Social Services Board, create a consolidated Human Services Agency consisting of the Departments of Social Services and Transportation, and that the Board of Commissioners would assume the responsibilities of the associated governing board, the Human Services Board.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
We need to have a motion to adopt the resolution of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners creating a consolidated Human Services Agency, which the Board of Commissioners will govern and related actions.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Before we move off of that, we have had extensive discussions amongst ourselves that, in open meetings, I should say, that although the Department of Social Services Board is going to be abolished, there should be an advisory council or an advisory board that's going to be set up by the Board of Commissioners to assist in the day-to-day affairs or the monthly affairs of that board and to report to us so that I want to make certain that the public's aware of that, is that although we're assuming the responsibilities, it's going to be with an advisory capacity there at the Department of Human Services.
Next, we have Finance, Cabarrus County Schools' QSCB reallocation request and a budget amendment. Mr. Whitkey, are you going to speak? I know fewer Kelly was coming up.
I'm just sharing a document. I'm sorry. I'll turn you to your attention, the request that you have before you. Shall I, do we have that up? Oh, okay, this was the budget. Yes. What I was going to say was the request is for the approval of our budget amendment, and that we spoke to you about during the work session, if you have any questions. The reason I presented you with the one-page explanation, I know there were some questions about what we were doing about the cost of the roofing at J.N. Freese. And what we did was, we did receive bids. They were high, and so we've worked with the apparent low bidder to look at options that we had. And the two options that we came up with were to change from the, what we call the fully adhered, which simply means it's all glued down, to one that's mechanically fastened. It turns out that in further investigation with the manufacturer, they actually recommend that method rather than the fully adhered for this part of the country. So, that was a savings. And then also, in terms of the insulation value, the level that we were initially bidding at was for, like, a brand-new building, so it was fairly high for an older building. What the recommendation by the consultant was, was to reduce it. Obviously, it saves money. Insulation is very expensive these days. It takes us down to an R-value of somewhere between 15 and 17, which, as an example, for a new building, the rating should be and is mandated to be 25. So, 15 to 17 is still very good for that age of building. It's a 20-year-plus building, and it will pay for itself in the long run. And unfortunately, there are parts of the building that don't have any insulation, so that portion of it that we're doing will be improved and help the overall energy efficiency of the building. In doing that, we were able to reduce the price down to a total cost, and I'm down in paragraph four, of $186,560. That includes a 20-year warranty on the roof, and also it included a preferred roofing material, which is Duralast. With those costs involved, with the money that we're transferring, I know this is somewhat confusing, but we're asking you for a change in budget by, I believe it is $30,000, to this project among the three projects that we had on the budget amendment. We'll be back to you next month for an additional fund transfer to make this project whole. And the reason we did it in this fashion was, we're, as you know, we're trying to reduce the number of projects, and as we do that, there's chunks of money left around in a number of projects. So, the simple reality is, we're simply taking those dollars, gathering them up, and putting them in ongoing projects so we have sufficient funds to complete those projects.
And the total amount that you're requesting us to move is $67,979.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought you said $30,000.
I'm sorry. I meant for the roof.
Yeah, just for the, if you look on page 174, you can see some, three projects that are increasing budgets and-
A large number.
Nine that are decreasing, some quite small.
Yeah.
Moving the money around to cover the three projects that they have identified.
Okay.
So, are there any questions?
What is the R-value now without the roof?
It's between 2 and 4.
Okay. So, obviously, there's a significant change between 2 and 4 to 15 to 17.
Yes, sir.
Is it that significant from 15 to 17 to 25?
In terms of costs, it basically-
I understand cost, but I'm talking about in savings and in helping out with inside the building. I mean, is there going to be, is there a notable difference between 25 and 15 to 17 inside the building or in the cost of electricity? Let's change it around. I can put R-20 in my house. I'm not going to see that much difference in my electric bill.
Right. The one thing I would say, and the reason I'm hesitating, this is a partial roof replacement. If we were doing this across the roof, I'd have an answer for you-
Okay.
-without much trouble. The area that we're talking about is a heavily-used area of the school, so I think that in terms of the air conditioning, in terms of the amount of student movement in these areas, it will help. The overall building plan, it's not going to make a huge difference in the short term. I think in the long term, it will.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I've got a question for you, and forgive me if we have already discussed this. The Concord High School, the dining room expansion, I know recently, was it the courtyard that was taken out and the cafeteria was, I guess, expanded into that area?
Yes, sir.
What other expansion, where is it going to expand to in addition to that?
The expansion that we're talking about in this particular item is actually the, just lost it, auxiliary gymnasium expansion for weights. It's a weight room.
Right. Well, okay, so this was, so this is reflecting the previous?
Yes, I'm sorry. We're removing what funds are left in the dining room project.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, if there's no other comments, I would accept a motion to approve Cabarrus County Schools' QSCB reallocations of various budget, project budgets totaling $67,979 and related budget amendment contingent on Cabarrus County Board of Education's approval on June 3. They already, they approved this, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, this was typed up from our work session.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Whitkey, I would like to make one other observation, please.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
At the Northwest Gym, I would hope that a serious look will be made on the parking area because the equipment used to build the gym has greatly destroyed their driveway. And if that is not included in the budget, then if there are any other funds that would need to be moved, that would be an appropriate place to put money. If there's not funds to finish, to start another project, then I would hope that the Board of Education will look at that because it's, I'm sure you've seen it, they've driven over it, and I don't believe all of that was in the original specs, and I feel certain that someone will want additional money even though their equipment is what messed it up. So I hope that the Board of Education will look at that with these QSCB funds in order to make that project whole.
Thank you. That's a good suggestion. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item we have is actually on page, let's do six, well, no, I guess, sorry, we need to do five. My apologies. Next item we have is the budget, which begins on page 176. And as Commissioners know, I think we've met, we started in January with a work session. We had three work sessions, regular budget work sessions. We had our regular scheduled work session in June, and we've talked about the budget in quite a few ways. The handout that you were given at the beginning of the meeting shows changes. It's this sheet that's kind of gray in color. These are things that we indicated to staff that we wanted put in or moved around, if you will, in the budget. I don't know, Commissioners, if you want to talk about any items specifically, if there are any other changes. I know we talked about some more changes that may not have been captured in this. Just, you know, what is your pleasure as far as the budget goes?
Well, in looking at the budget, I want to applaud everybody that's put their hands on it. You know, Parth and Ann, y'all have done a fantastic job. You know, it's sort of like herding cats that are getting chased by other cats and things, and being able to pull everything back together is phenomenal. And Pam, in your supervision, has done a tremendous job. I certainly appreciate it. It's been a lot of information that we've gone over. And then separate and apart from that, going over it and making certain we got a good understanding about the budget. So my hat's off to what y'all have done. Tremendous job. With that, the only thing that I would ask to be taken out, and this is in the form of the motion, is the financial contribution to the Arts Council of $26,000. I would make a motion to remove the Arts Council funding contribution of $26,000. And the basis of that is when we were presented with the information, the county, if you include the $26,000, provides financial contributions as well as non-financial contributions in the amount of $241,819, or $819. That is $30,000 to the schools. We pay electricity, utilities, to $13,600. Custodial services of roughly $3,900. Building maintenance of $18,631. We are adding an HVAC system of $10,000. And then they have use of 11,635 square feet. And if you were to compute that at a fair market value rent of $12, that's $139,000. I use those numbers coming up to the $241,000 to say this, is in looking through the strategic plan of the Arts Council, they were, they had a goal of reaching out to the municipalities and getting paid, or getting from the municipalities 50 cents per capita, per person. And that would mean that if you looked at all the municipalities, that would be an obligation of $71,000, a little over $71,000. With the county putting in $21,000 because of the population from the census, we would have 42,000 people, is that $21,000. And I think that we are certainly putting in our fair share, and more so just in the building, utilities, custodial, providing it to the Cabarrus County school system. So that I think that the financial contribution on top of that is something more than needs to be done. So that I think that I would make a motion to remove that, number one. And my second point is, from what I understand, the Arts Council's done a tremendous job in their efforts of fundraising. They've gotten a 35% increase in their fundraising activities, as well as received a match from a financial institution to the tune of $25,000. So I don't think that this is going to be a financial hit to the Arts Council as initially thought. So that I would certainly make that motion to withdraw the financial contribution of $26,000.
And I'll second Commissioner White's motion, and I would like to applaud the staff as well. I think this budget, I've been very pleased with the budget and the staff's productivity on this. I know it's a lot of hard work, and I know we've put in a lot of hours in budget meetings. But I know that you guys have really worked hard to keep the spending where it is, and I've been very pleased with the budget. And I think it's a good conservative approach to the county government. The only thing I do not like would be the additional employees for the Department of Social Services. However, that's something that we cannot control on this level, to the fact of the increase of demand and the federal and state government mandates that require us to administer these services at a level. And we just do not have the sufficient staff to do that. So that's out of our control, but other than that, I'm pleased with the budget, and I appreciate the staff and their hard work.
Commissioners, we do have a motion on the table in a second. Is there other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say so. We grew on this budget by 3%, correct? Growing employees by, I don't know what the final number was, but about 4%. That building was sitting over empty, if I remember right, when the Arts Council moved in it. County wouldn't use it because it wasn't sufficient for office space. We're going to take $26,000. If $26,000 is all we can find to take out of this budget, then there's something wrong with the whole system. And Noel said that if she lost the $26,000, she'd lose one employee, which is in the private sector. We're going to grow government and take away from the private sector with $26,000, which makes no sense to me whatsoever, to sit here and grow government by 3% a year. And I got no problem with the way they put the budget together. What I got a problem with is how much money they're spending. It looks to me like they got together and figured out how much was coming in and tried to spend all of it. And I don't think we ought to be doing that. That's the wrong way to be going with government, I think.
I would like to respond to that. I know that there is growth in additional revenues in this budget. However, that is based upon the growth of the building and the additional revenues that are being produced are actually paying for themselves. With the additional growth, the fees that are being paid for, you know, for building permits and things of that nature, is actually paying for the increased employees.
That's projected growth.
I would just like to say that I am not in favor of removing the $26,000 funding for the Arts Council. As Commissioner Burridge mentioned, I think Noel did a good job of explaining where those funds went to, and that if we eliminated those funds, we would eliminate a position which would also eliminate programs. I think that it is for the number of students and citizens in Cabarrus County that are served. With that amount of money, it is a good investment for us. And in addition to that, I'm very much into historic preservation. I think that the adaptive reuse of that building that the Arts Council has put it to does an excellent job of making that building productive for the citizens of Cabarrus County. Were it not for that, then we may have a building that was less than desirable for other purposes, that we were forced to continue to maintain and invest money on. I think this is a perfect example of a public-private partnership that works. We have government money that goes into the preservation and operation of that building. We have government money that goes in from the municipalities as well as the county to support those operations and the programs that they present for the public. It works the way that I think it should work, and the public steps up and participates in that funding with private contributions. I wish we had more organizations like that in Cabarrus County that work that way. So I need a little clarification on the motion, though. Is that motion just to remove that funding, or is that to approve the budget with that funding?
No, my motion is to remove that funding, and then the next step is, however this motion goes, then the motion would, then another motion would be to do the, to talk about the budget.
Great. And, you know, this may not be the appropriate time, but I too applaud staff for the way they've handled the budget. I have certainly had no difficulty, and this is my first budget. The rest of you have been through this process several times, but they have been awfully cooperative with me and answered any questions that I might have. I think we've given adequate opportunity for the public to participate in our work sessions. They've been televised. People have had an opportunity to hear all of our discussions and to express their wishes. So I think it has been a good process, and I think we've ended up with a good result.
Hey, Commissioners, we have before us a motion to delete the $26,000 cash contribution to the Arts Council. And we have a second. So all those in favor of deleting $26,000, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries three to two. Commissioners, let's go ahead and hold our public hearing on the budget, and then we'll have time for more discussion on the various budgets that we have. So at this time, I will open the public hearing concerning the proposed budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the budget? The question before me was concerning the fire tax. Do you guys want to talk now, or do you want to wait and talk specifically at that budget? Since this is the public hearing portion, do you, why don't we go ahead, and I think it would be more appropriate to go ahead and do that now. So if you do wish to speak concerning the budget, so when you come up, I know who you are, but if you will tell us who you are and who you represent, so that everybody that watches this will understand. Thank you.
I'm the chair, Commissioners, Mr. Downs. I'm Dale Ludi. I'm the mayor for the town of Mount Pleasant. This is Randy Holloway, our fire consultant for the town of Mount Pleasant. As you're aware, several weeks ago at a workshop, we asked for a 4% or 4 cents, excuse me, increase in our rural area fire tax. And I think that was not favorably looked upon after a meeting with Mr. Downs and his staff. I think the recommendation was to come back, maybe and possibly do a 2-cent increase in the rural district. That money would be used for additional staffing, one more person during their peak times, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and with a purchase of a tanker, purchase of a tanker. And we'll be glad to try to answer any questions. And I think Mr. Holloway's got some additional information, if you want us to share that at this time.
If you will, go ahead, Chair.
The 2 cent will generate an additional $73,000, just almost $74,000. And as the mayor said, some of that would go towards an additional position in the daytime, Monday through Friday, which is a critical time for the volunteer response, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So that would give us three personnel staffing during the week. $36,000 for annual payment on a tanker with financing seven to 10 years, depending on the price the tanker comes in at, and about $4,500 to go towards the water supply supplies if we attempt to lower the ISO rating, the fire insurance rating in the rural district. And we are still very committed to do that, even with the reduction in the requests. We will still move forward, and I think the mayor will be willing to speak on behalf of the town to say we will be expected to be held accountable for that. So we will move forward on that.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from, you mentioned Mount Mitchell, from Mount Mitchell that would like to speak? I mean, I know we heard from you previously. I don't know if you have any additional comments for us.
And I didn't bring no ice cream either.
I'm still trying. He did, it's okay.
I almost started to stop at Dairy Queen, but I didn't know if she liked chocolate or vanilla, so I just went on, come on down. We're still looking to try to go up on our budget this year and trying to do a lot of water points and stuff. And I was sitting back there trying to get it figured up a little bit right quick with the different ones. I got right now seven ponds in Cabarrus County that I have located, and, actually, I'm sorry, eight, I found another one today way back in the woods. And I'm looking at different ponds, you know, to put water points and stuff to help get this ISO rating. And so basically, we're still in the same point we was last time we talked, is trying to put on more staffing and equipment and trying to get these water points. So basically, I'm still about, basically where I was at the last time I talked to you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You need to stay afterwards because we do have, there you go, see? There you go, yeah, that's my understanding. All right, is there anyone else to speak for or against the budget?
We did have a presentation from Coldwater, but I don't think any of the Commissioners had questions, so.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's no one else to speak, I will close the public hearing. Okay. I'm going to start based on the fire districts. And then any comments, Commissioners, that you want to make about any part of the budget, you're more than welcome to. All right, let me make a few comments to start with. Concerning the fire district from Mount Pleasant, I'm okay with 2 cents. I will tell you that my concern is that if, for some reason, I'm not suggesting it, but if for some reason that we were to contract with someone else to provide that same service, you would be very hard-pressed to provide the service in the town of Mount Pleasant. This 2 cents, as you noted, is a $74,000 increase that you will be getting in the budget. What you are doing for the town residents is about $7,000. And so I would like to see, yes, we will, I'll state that, I believe we will hold you accountable to see how you're spending the extra money, but I also think that as a town and for the residents in the town, that you still need to look at what your contribution of your budget is to providing the fire service. And even with the presentations, I still don't think that the town contribution is where it needs to be. I am not one that's going to tell the town, Town Council of Mount Pleasant, how to do your business, but I do think that that is a concern for me. So if you come back next year and ask for two more cents to get to the four cents that you wanted this year, then I would most definitely expect that the town of Mount Pleasant, Town Council, will make some bigger changes as far as your budget goes. As far as Mount Mitchell goes, I actually watch Channel 22. I don't watch us, I'll tell you that. My comment usually in my household is that I don't sound that southern, and I've already lived it, so I don't need to watch it again. But I do watch the other programs. So, and the county manager knows this, I relayed to him today, I watched Rowan County Commissioners' conversation, and one commissioner stated, from Rowan County, you asked, I think, two and a half cents for us and two and a half cents for them. I don't know how they're going to vote on their budget, but their proposal at that time in their work session was a half a cent. And the commissioner, the Rowan County Commissioner stated, "Mount Mitchell has another funding stream, and that's Cabarrus County, so we don't need to give them the increase that they want." So I was concerned about that, and I've spent some time today looking at the numbers. So if I look at the calls that go out that are in Cabarrus County versus the calls in Rowan County, if I look at what the tax brings in, in the two, if I look at the valuation of the property of the two, every way I looked at it, I am okay with two and a half cents because based on the call ratio, that has Cabarrus County residents paying, I think, proportionately the right amount of money. Next year, though, I will say that if Rowan County again says that they don't need to do anything to help you out, and that you can rely on Cabarrus County residents, then I might have more of a problem with it. But I do think that, at least when I did the math, it's... But I do think that, at least when I did the math, it's a 65-35 split, I believe. And at those tax rates, the proposed rates of two and a half cents from us and a half cent from Rowan, we are right in that range. So I am okay. I think that's why you're here, is because I was the one that questioned that. Back to the gray sheet, just a few things to make sure everybody knows. Some of the things that we're looking at, we do a COLA, we are proposing a cost of living increase for our employees. So there is a same cost of living increase for the local supplement for Kannapal City Schools and Cabarrus County Schools. We were requested by Cabarrus County Schools to fund growth, and their projected growth is 771 students. We are projecting about 50% funding of that growth. We also have Economic Development Corporation. I think there was a, I don't know if typo is the right word, but in order to make it the same as the current funding level, we needed to make that change. We are very much concerned in Cabarrus County, and I want to say thank you to all the county commissioners for this. We're very concerned about school nurses and the efforts that they make in the public school system. So for the school nurses, they would get health insurance coverage, or the opportunity for health insurance coverage, let me put it that way, and they would get an additional hour so that they are on campus when the students are there, and they would be there during the workdays in order to be able to better prepare. They're still 10-month employees. They also would be called into duty by the Health Alliance in the event of any kind of emergency. Commissioner White was the one who proposed with the Public Health Authority that kind of unprecedented, their budget was hit here at the end of the fiscal year on the refunding that they get for Medicaid. And so we discussed that we would do some one-time stopgap funding in the amount of $300,000 to help the Health Alliance in order to meet their budget. And, let's see, trying to think if there were any other major ones in there. I think those were the major things that we had previously discussed. And we had three part-time employees that would not have been covered by insurance until mandated next year, and we would go ahead and cover those this year. So I think that we have tried very hard, I think staff has worked very hard with us. Thank you to everybody at the Health Alliance, and, well, at Health Alliance, but, sorry, I'm looking over at Ben, and I want to say, Ben, at DSS, we went through line by line and got great explanations of the different funds that go through his department, and what they mean, and what it means to us. And I think it was very good work on our part to make sure that we really understood what was going on there. And so I want to thank the commissioners, I want to thank Ben and his staff, and I want to thank our staff for working so hard with this budget. I do think things are getting better in Cabarrus County in this budget. We've been able to address some issues, not everything, of course, but I do think that we've worked hard to get to where we are. So thank you to everybody involved. At this time, I would open it up to the other commissioners for any general comments. Commissioner Burridge, can I start with you? Anything that you want to add about the budget?
Well, there's some things on here I could, or I'd like to see passed, like the Sheriff's Department, 911 operators, cost of living for the employees, school in the county. But I still think a 3% increase this year, what you going to do next year? State's cutting back, federal government's cutting back. I don't know where all this economy getting so much better is coming from, but I hadn't seen it. And most economists I listen to, they don't see it. If you add up all the budgets of all the different county and cities and town budgets in Cabarrus County, it's almost a half, well, it is a half a billion dollars. To me, for this small of a county, that seemed like a whole lot of money to be taken out the private sector to operate government. Some point in time, this stuff's going to have to come together and not have everybody doing the same thing in each town, city, county. Like I say, this budget grows 3% spending, 4% hiring employees. When the private sector's not doing that, we're hurting the private sector by increasing funding, by spending more money. Like I say, I would like to vote for some of these things, but I cannot vote for this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
You know, my hat's off to what a lot of the staff has done and the departments. You take to the new, potentially, the new Human Services Department, well, we voted on that tonight, but the Human Services Department, through no fault of ours, we're getting pushed down to have increased services that are having to be provided. We're having to deal with additional staffing because additional requirements are being placed on us. We talked, we heard about coding, and if coding isn't done correctly, then we're going to pay a deep price for that. And Commissioner Meesmer served on that, on the Department of Social Services Board, and has reported back to us the great deal of concerns that the federal government and the state government has put on our local human services and what is having to be done there. So that in regards to that, there are some additional employees to be able to protect and be able to help us financially and save money there. In regards to the inspectors and to the additional staff that is going to be needed in the Register of Deeds Office, that is going to be driven, that is driven by the number of homes. And I believe that Commissioner, or Chair Madam Poole, mentioned that 100 and, 100-plus applicant, applications were made for new water lines, new water lines, not remodeling. So that, that's additional 100 homes that are coming into Cabarrus County that need to be inspected to make certain they're built safely to register the, or the transfer of the land. So that, yes, there is, the county government has it and added employees, but it's not through our own doing. It is from the economy in regards to new homes being built. There are a number of developers that are, I've gotten several emails about inspections and having to get that taken care of. And we're having to compete with outerlying counties that are paying a tremendous amount for that type of expertise. So, yes, it is going up, but it's going up for a specific reason, and that's because of the growth that is going on in the county. And also because of mandates that are being handed down that we're having to deal with. In regards to Dr. A. or Dr. Arabak's comments in regards to increase in salary for the Cabarrus County School System, is that would be a nice luxury to have. However, we have yet to receive that study. That has been talked to us, we've been told that, we've been asked that about this study that the school system has for 12 months now, and we have yet to have it. We've asked for it. I asked for it in our last budget meeting, and we do not have it. I will not make a decision, nor do I believe any of the five of us up here will make a decision, without having the information to make that decision and to have a frank discussion about the study and what it means, so that we can't address that issue at this time. I am, I appreciate the commissioners' efforts in regards to Health Alliance. They were told by the state government that they can count on a reimbursement of $2 million, and they were told that they were only going to get reimbursed at $1 million. So that is a budget shortfall, and we weren't not notified, or the Health Alliance wasn't notified until the last two months of this budget year. So that it makes it very difficult to plan. So that certainly helps out. I think the school nurses, like Chair Poole said, was, is a tremendous asset for the county and for what happens in the school system. There are a lot of things that we're trying to address, and we have to take incremental steps. And I applaud everybody that's taken an effort in that. I applaud all that you've done. And as it relates to the Mount Pleasant, the Coldwater, and the Mount Mitchell fire districts, I have no problems in supporting Coldwater, Mount Mitchell, and Mount Pleasant at the two cents. I am concerned about the extra burden that's being placed on the county residents. I know y'all know that. I don't want to beat a dead horse, and I know y'all are going to do what y'all can to address that. Mount Mitchell, you need to beat the head, beat the Rowan County Commissioners in the head, because y'all do a tremendous job up there. And that it takes a partnership, both back and forth. And I think that, you know, for you to take time away from your brick mason job, to go out and look for ponds, is tremendous, is exemplary. That's what a chief and that's what a leader does. So I really appreciate what you've done, sir. So that I will be in support of the fire district's requests, and I hope that this will stem and provide the opportunity that is being needed and not spur more issues. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Meesmer?
Sure. As I stated earlier, I was pleased with the budget process and also pleased with the budget. And being a physical conservative, I'll describe myself, and being through this process two times once before, you know, I am pleased with this. And I know that there is additional revenues coming into the county, however, it's not from any sort of tax increase. And as Commissioner White said, with the additional spending, this is coming from, you know, increase in demand of the staff. And with the building inspections, we've all received phone calls and emails stating that the building inspections are not being done in an adequate manner, timeline. So, you know, we are getting in the way of the private sector by not providing this service that is paid for by these fees. So with, you know, these additional building, with the additional building that's going on in Cabarrus County and the fees paying for these additional positions, we're actually helping the private sector in that manner. So I'm pleased with that. I am disappointed that the federal and the state government, well, ultimately, the federal government and the Affordable Care Act pushing down the mandates. And it's one thing, you know, we hear in the news, in the media every day about how it's going to cost businesses and individuals. Well, this is one thing that most, most people are unaware of, is that the county government's going to be picking up a good bit of the tab to administer this program, with the Department of Social Services having to qualify individuals and take their requests. And so this is one thing that's not, you know, well-known, is that it's going to cost the county government a lot of money, and this is something that, you know, we can't, you know, we can't say that we're just not going to do. The state and the federal government will come in and make sure we do it, and we'll have to pay the price. So it's very unfortunate, you know, I don't like the idea of that. However, you know, we can't fix that here on our level. So with that being said, I appreciate everything that's went into this, and I'm in support of the budget.
Commissioner Morris?
Well, without restating what has been stated very well by my fellow commissioners, I think that we have done the very best job that we can under the circumstances with the budget. There are a lot of questions out there that remain unanswered. We saw on the video talking about the state budget. We're not sure exactly where all that's going to land at this point. I certainly appreciate Commissioner Meesmer's comments about supporting the private sector with what we're doing with building inspectors and those kind of things. And if we do not, if we are not responsive to those circumstances in the community, which does indicate an uptick in economic activity, then we are holding back the private sector. I think one of the most interesting phone calls that I've had this year was about the building inspectors. And the gentleman I was speaking with said, "You need to pay those guys more money." And I said, "You need to come to the commissioners' meeting and stand up at the podium and say that for all the rest of Cabarrus County to hear." But I guess that would be, if there were one part of the process that I would say could be improved, that would be more citizen participation. And as you can see, we haven't had a single person to stand up and talk about the budget tonight. You know, we try to be very diligent in our decisions and very concerned about, for example, the fire taxes and how they affect residents. It would be a lot easier to do that if those residents were here expressing their opinions to us. But I feel very, very good that we've done a good job with it and happy to go forward.
May I make one more comment? I forgot, I would be remiss to say that Dr. Spalding out at RCC, what she has not been able to say because of where her funding source comes from, but I will say for, I will say on my behalf in regards to RCC, is that as, for years, they have been receiving money, and community colleges have been receiving money on one funding definition and one funding formula. And this year, the legislature has saw fit to reduce that or to change it. And what that means is that RCC is going to lose about $2 to $2.1 million in funding from the state. That is a tremendous amount, especially when the tuition that you pay does not come just to Cabarrus County. It goes to Raleigh, and then they see fit as to how they disperse it. So I think that what Dr. Spalding is doing is tremendous, given the source that it's a moving target from one year to the next, as to what sort of funding amount she's going to be able to get, or they're going to be able to get and to disperse. So my hat's off to RCC, and I'm sorry that I did not mention it earlier.
Okay. Well, Commissioners, we have before us our budget. At this time, I would accept a motion to adopt fiscal year 2014 Cabarrus County Budget Ordinance for the General Fund, Cabarrus Arena and Event Center Fund, Landfill Fund, 911 Emergency Telephone Fund, and Health Insurance Fund for fiscal year 1314.
So moved.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Next, we have the fiscal year 2014 Cabarrus County Budget Ordinance for the Special Fire Tax and Insurance Fund for fiscal year 1314. Just for clarification, what we have before us has two cents for Mount Pleasant and the requested increases, correct, for Coldwater and Mount Mitchell?
The one for the amount of $3 million.
Turn your mic.
It's the ordinance for the amount of $3,070,327.
I just want to make sure that what we had in there was the two cents. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve the Special Fire Tax and Insurance Fund.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, I need a motion to adopt fiscal year 2014 Cabarrus County Budget Ordinance for the Capital Improvements Projects Fund for fiscal year 1314.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. One last comment on the budget for this next fiscal year. When we do this again next year, I hope that one of the things that we do look at is, and I was going to say this even though I didn't know you two ladies were going to be here, I would like for us to look at the libraries again and see if there's any way that we can continue to add some Saturday services. I mean, we're not every Saturday yet, but try to get us back to where we were before we had to make some drastic cuts. And maybe during the next, you know, during this fiscal year, you can look at that and let us know what we might or might not need to do. Okay? That's just another comment. I've had people tell me that they can't always remember which Saturday and different things like that. So I do think we've worked very hard on their budget, and I hope that we can look at doing something there during the year or next year. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
For clarification purposes, the ordinance that you adopted for the General Fund includes the $26,000.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
A deduct.
No, it does not.
We made a motion to deduct.
You made that motion, but the one you adopted is in there.
Well, yeah.
So we need to remove the $26,000.
Correct. Remove the $26,000.
Yes.
Thank you.
So that... Just for clarification, you guys correct me on my math here, the correct number is $213 million for General Fund, $213,461,012. And for the total ordinance, it would be $226,43,795. That would be subtracting $26,000 from the General Fund and then $26,000 from the overall.
Because we did the motion to begin with, that was included in the motion. Okay. Next, page 271. If you will go to the back of your agenda, please. Ben Rose is here. Do you need, I don't know if you need to speak about this, Human Services Foster Care Budget Revision, or if Ann needs to. Is there anybody that needs to speak to it? I can read it. You need it. During fiscal year 2012-13, the department requested $1.3 million in funds for the foster care line item. These funds provide for foster care and payments on behalf of children in the care of the department. Through the budgetary process, $900,000 was allocated to this line item for these expenses, as well as $400,000 of the fund balance was assigned to cover any expenses above the budgeted amount for foster care, should it be needed. The board approved an additional $200,000 at the April Regor Meeting. However, the department estimates the need for an additional $120,000 to $150,000 to finish out the year, since this is the last... Since this is the last Board of Commissioners meeting in this fiscal year, the maximum amount is requested for approval. Commissioners, do you have any questions concerning the budget amendment? Okay, if not, I would accept a motion to adopt the budget amendment. This affects the current budget that we are in.
We have, those monies are what we have available.
They're in our contingency, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, so moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
This is for $150,000 to finish out the year. I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, now we have appointments to boards and committees.
Madam Chair, one clarification, that's not coming from contingency, it's coming from fund balance, assigned fund balance, yes.
Okay, coming from assigned fund balance.
But it was something that we had identified in the...
That's what I thought the presentation was when we had the presentation. I wanted to make certain that that was available. Thank you.
Okay, now we have appointments. Commissioners, just for a couple of general comments, please. I had a realization, I guess, in the last couple of months, just thinking back on all the appointments that we do. I've thought so much about trying to get people to apply for the boards. And so we've kind of talked about that in every single meeting, about the fact that we need people to apply to boards. And I've noticed that sometimes we have people who need exceptions for length of service, and yet we have other people who have applied to be on those boards. And so we are overlooking someone who has, if you will answer the call, to volunteer, excuse me, and yet we've also made exceptions and kept people on boards for, in some cases, very long time. So I did ask that all the commissioners look at the appointments that we have for tonight and to notice the ones that have different exceptions, whether it's length of service, multiple boards, and to look at the list to see if there are other people who have asked to serve on boards. So the first board that we have is the Board of Equalization and Review. One motion that we need, Scott Dyer, who is on there, has asked to be removed. I think he's completed his term. So we would need a motion to remove Scott Dyer from the Board of Equalization and Review roster and to thank him for his service.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's a recommendation for that particular seat to appoint Robert Carruth to fulfill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2014, with an exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy. We also have a request to reappoint Audie Dover and Mary Elizabeth Stewart to three-year terms with exceptions to the length of service provision for both of them. Mr. Dover has been on the board, was first appointed in 2005, and Ms. Stewart was first appointed also in 2005. The first appointment for Mr. Dover was to finish out an unexpired term. So concerning the three, those three positions now with Scott Dyer being removed, what is the pleasure of the board as far as appointments go? We also have, sorry, let me note, we have another application on file from Sharita Jones Thomas. I do not know Ms. Jones Thomas. I don't know if any other commissioners know her.
Madam Chairman, I'll comment. I did do a bit of research and took a look at her application. Because I agree with you, I think that when we have folks out there that want to serve, that we may need to rotate some folks off. There are certainly circumstances when that may not be the best thing to do, and Board of Equalization and Review certainly depends on some historical knowledge of pending matters and things that have happened in the past. I think in this case, the only other applicant that's on that list expressed a desire to be appointed to a board that met after 6:00 PM. It's my understanding that this board typically meets between 3:00 and 6:00. She also, as I understand, works out of town, so that would be something that would not work for her. So I would certainly be willing to make a motion that we accept this requested action and reappoint Mary Elizabeth Stewart, designate her as chairman, reappoint Audie Dover, and designate him as vice chairman, and appoint Robert Carruth to the unexpired term of Scott Dyer, which, as I understand, is for one year.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
One thing I want to make certain is, do we select the chair and the vice chair, or do they select the chair and the vice chair?
Yes.
We select them? Okay, then I will, that's my, that's what I want to make certain.
And I would make a comment that this is a very important board, and I think all the people on here are perfectly qualified. However, I would say that three years from now, when these two come up again, I hope that they will have, we will have additional people to apply to be on that board from 2005 to go to 2016. We should be very appreciative of their willingness to be on there, but I think that it may be time to get some newer people. So nothing against any of them, I just have a concern about the length of service. So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have Cabarrus County Tourism Authority. There are three seats that need to be appointed, and there are different groups that make recommendations for those seats. The Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce has recommended for seat number nine, John Cox. The Cabarrus County Tourism Authority has recommended for seat number eight, Philip Cunningham. And the Cabarrus County Tourism Authority has recommended for seat number 12, Frank Lapsley.
And one more. Tourism Authority is a...
There we go. Vinay Patel on seat number seven is also asking to be reappointed for a three-year term and an exception to the residency provision. And you serve on their board. I know a number of these seats are specifically designated for people in the industry.
Correct. If I might digress, the board is made up, the Cabarrus Tourism Board, or CBB, Convention and Visitors Board, is made up of a number of people. And the idea, when that is statutorily created, that the Board of Commissioners appoints, and when it was created, the Commissioners, the Chamber, and the Tourism Board would select certain names. It has grown just a tad, or it's grown another three seats, because knowing the diversity on Exit 49, on Concord Mills Boulevard, and on Speedway Boulevard. And the idea was, there needs to be more of a diversity on the board. So that's the reason why you have selections of hotelier or not. I would argue strongly that although Mr. Patel does not live here in Cabarrus County, he has a strong presence in Cabarrus County with a number of hotels. And he also serves on the, let me get this right, CRVA, the Charlotte Regional Visitors Association Board as well, so that he has been a tremendous asset to understand the workings and being able to help in conjunction with the two boards. So that I would strongly recommend all for these persons and for support and for votes.
Okay.
And if need be, I'd make a motion to appoint each of them as presented in the action sheet that we have before us.
Okay, I do have a motion. Do I, I have a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, we have Cabarrus County Youth Council. There are a number of spots, the youth council, of course, is composed of high school students, and some of them are fortunate enough to graduate and move on to college or to other areas. And so this board does cycle through the teenagers. So the requested action that we have is to point Cooper McCauley to the Central Cabarrus High School position for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2014, to reappoint John Eric Taylor to the At-Large Covenant Classical, is where he goes to school, the At-Large Position for a one-year term, and to reappoint Michael Walker to the Cox Mill High School Position, also for a one-year term. Do I have a motion? I know you want to make some comments.
Sure. As it stands now, we still have a vacancy at Hickory Ridge High School and also Northwest Cabarrus High School. So if there's any students, either one of those high schools that would like to put in application, certainly do so. You can go to the county's website and find out more information. But the youth council does consist of two representatives from each high school, and I encourage all of the high school youth to get involved.
And if I look at our list correctly on page 208, there are a number of students whose terms actually are ending, and June 30th, 2013. There are a few. So if you are at other schools, it may be that there was a senior that's graduating, and so there may be other opportunities. So we really do need to get a wide variety of youth to apply to be on this council. So do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to appoint all three of the youth listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the Jury Commission. Phyllis Crump currently has served on the Jury Commission since 2001. She would need an exception to the length of service provision. She is willing to serve another term. It's a two-year term. There are two other applications on file, Christine Barrier and Diane Berry. I know Ms. Barrier, I do not know Ms. Berry, though the name sounds very familiar. So the question before the board would be, do you wish to have an exception to the length of service for Ms. Crump for the Jury Commission, or do you wish to appoint one of the other applications, applicants? Mr. Morris, did you have a chance to look at either of those by chance?
I did. I know actually all three of these people on this application. I think they all would do an excellent job. Ms. Crump represents the Midland community. Sometimes it's a little bit more difficult for us to get those folks here to serve on those boards. I will publicly express my ignorance that I don't know exactly what the Jury Commission Obviously, Ms. Crump does.
Very well.
But I would, I would be willing to make a motion to reappoint her and make an exception to the length of service provision.
Second.
Would you like to explain what the Jury Commission does?
I would vote for it. It would be the easiest thing.
So you're not going to be as bold to admit like I did.
I don't want to bore people with details.
Okay. I would, I would express a concern that she has been on the board since 2001. I don't know from this, what we have in front of us, who else is on the Jury Commission. So I would hope that in two years from now, that we would either have someone from Midland or someone, either of these other applicants, that we would strongly consider someone else for this board. At that point in time, 2015, Ms. Crump will have served 14 years and most definitely would deserve our recognition of her very long service on that board. It's a three-member commission, so I don't know, according to this, I don't know who else is on there and how long they've been on there. But we do have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have Mount Pleasant Planning Board and Board of Adjustment, ETJ, Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. Currently serving, let's see, it's hard for us on some of the ETJ positions to find people willing to serve. John Murdoch III, Whitmose Jr., and Margaret Strickland serves as the alternate. There would be another exception to the length of service provision for each of those members. Two of them began in 2004, Ms. Strickland began in 2006. And I don't know, does she serve often as the alternate? The alternate serves if someone else is not there? Is that correct? So I don't have a tendence to know how often, you know, the alternate is there or has to serve. I think at this length in time, I wouldn't mind putting her on as a member and maybe moving Mr. Murdoch as the alternate, but I'm not set on any of that. Does anybody have any preferences, or anybody want to make a motion? And there are no other applications on file.
Then I would guess we'd make a motion to reappoint as presented. Mr. Murdoch, Mr. Moose, and Ms. Strickland as the alternate for the Mount Pleasant Planning and Board of Adjustment for three years' term ending June 30th, 2016, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy for each member.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we would, I would like to encourage people from Mount Pleasant, and we've talked a lot about Mount Pleasant. Three members were appointed by Mount Pleasant, three members were appointed by Cabarrus County. We need some other Mount Pleasant residents that would be willing to step up and serve on this board. Next, we have Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County. This also, their board is made up of, there's different categories of people on this board also. And we have before us a motion to reappoint Phyllis Wingate Jones to the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2016, with an exception to the residency provision. She is the, she is at CMC Northeast. Do you know her title? I don't know her title.
Yes, well, she is the head of the Northeast, but she's the member or designated from the Northeast Medical Center Board of Trustees. That was, that's her role that she's filling in.
Right. And the other one is to reappoint H.J. White to the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County as the county commissioner's representative for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2016.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. There are no other applications on file for this, just a note. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. And next, we have Rowan Cabarrus Community College Board of Trustees. The requested action is to reappoint Cindy Minnet and Irvin Newberry to their Board of Trustees to complete four-year terms ending June 30th, 2017. Again, this is an exception to the length of service provision. Mr. Newberry was first appointed in 1998, and Ms. Minnet was first appointed in 2005. And Commissioner Morris is our liaison.
Can we move Commissioner Morris in as one of those positions? Since he doesn't get a vote, I want him to vote.
And I've had some discussion today with Dr. Spalding, and I understand her, their desires to keep the board the same. I express my concern about length of service for another four-year term. Mr. Newberry has been on the board for 15 years at this point.
Well, can we not? If this board were to appoint Mr. Morris to one of those positions, to either position, either Mr. Newberry or Mrs. Minnet, to then have those persons as the liaison from the county, that would achieve the same purpose.
Yeah, I would think that we could do that.
I mean, my concern is that we're, there are other elected officials from municipalities that are on that board that do not fund RCC. And that, that is just unfathomable to me. So that, I think that if we're going to be funding, we should certainly have a vote at that table. And that's the reason why I would transition Commissioner Meesmer into a voting position.
Commissioner Morris.
Excuse me, Commissioner Morris, sorry, Commissioner Meesmer.
Thank you. No, I certainly agree that us having a financial stake and, you know, what we contribute financially to the community college, I would only see it fitting that we would have a voting member of this board, or a voting member on that board from our board. It would only make sense, so I agree with that. As long as Commissioner Morris is willing to step into one of those positions.
Well, as liaison to that board... Well, as liaison to that board, my fairly short tenure have found that group to be very open to our input and available to give us an opportunity to participate in their discussions. I agree that that might be something that might be a good thing, since we are one of the funders, that we have a voting position on that board. I do not see it as an urgent need that needs to necessarily be addressed at this moment. I think maybe if we were moving in that direction, I would prefer that we might have had these discussions several months ago, when they formulated the recommendations that they sent to us. I'm personally acquainted with both of these people that are being recommended, and they're excellent citizens in our community, and I think have done a good job in their role on that Board of Trustees. Their level of involvement has been such that to disrupt the ongoing projects that they may be involved in might not be the most productive thing for us to do. So I would be very comfortable with proceeding for this cycle in the way that it's currently set up, and make our desires known to them, to have a representative from this board be a voting member of the trustees, and hopefully address that as we proceed forward. That would be my desire.
My only concern is that we appoint two people, so it would be four more years before that would come up. There are people that are appointed from the governor's office, and if we were to place you on there, then that person could either be, as you said, our liaison. They also could be requested that the governor appoint them in one of the governor's positions that would come up, and I don't know when those come up. I don't know the timing on those.
I'm not aware of that either.
And again, my concern, as I stated multiple times, is the length of service. I know both of these people, and you're correct, they're both perfectly fine. I'm just concerned about a length of service, and that these are the two positions that we as a county appoint.
Right.
So, do I have a motion before the board concerning Rowan Cabarrus Community College?
I'd make a motion to reappoint.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion fails. Is there another motion to be considered?
I'd make a motion to appoint Mrs. Cindy Minnet to one of the positions, and Commissioner Steve Morris to the other position at this time.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And the motion carries three to two. Do you also want to appoint Mr. Newberry as the liaison for us, or do you want to hold that until next month for more discussion?
I'd hold that until next month, because I want to talk to Mr. Morris and see what his thoughts are, and, you know, make certain whether it's Mr. Newberry or somebody else. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I know Mr. Newberry, I know Mrs. Minnet. They've done a tremendous job, and I'm very confident in it. I just am concerned that two municipalities that can dictate what we will spend at RCCC or have a voice in what we spend do not have a financial stake in that. And I'm not saying they make a bad decision or make a poor decision, but I think that I'd rather have Mr. Morris on there as a voting member to be able to express the commission's position on the financial issues.
Okay. Okay, next, we have Region F Aging Advisory Committee. We have before us Carol Voight and Jean Chandler, and the requested action is, let's see, Jean Chandler is currently serving as an alternate and is now eligible to be reappointed as a delegate for a two-year term. Carol Voight currently serves as a delegate and is eligible for reappointment. We also have Ted Drain to be reappointed as an alternate for a one-year term, and there would be a length of service exemption, exception, sorry, for his appointment.
I don't see where we have any additional.
And I do not see, that is one that we ask about quite often to try to get people to apply, and you're correct, we don't have any other applicants at this time for that board. So I would make a motion to reappoint Carol Voight and Jean Chandler as delegates, and with the exceptions for Ms. Chandler, and to reappoint Ted Drain as an alternate for his one-year term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And next, we have Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Kay Strayer is, requested action to be appointed to the Advisory Committee for a one-year term, and to remove Karen Pinzian effective July the 1st, 2013, and thank her for her many years of service. She has been on the committee since 2000. She has most definitely served a very lengthy term there. Do I have a motion to appoint and remove?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also a position that we have, four vacant positions on that board, so we strongly encourage citizens to apply for the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. And we have the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. New rules of operation were adopted by the board on January 22nd to take effect July the 1st. According to new rules of operation, membership will consist of six designated agency representatives, seven at-large members, and two ex-officio members. I'm on page 237. The seven at-large positions will have staggered three-year terms. The agency representative positions shall be considered perpetual members of the committee. Recommended agency representatives are Larry Belt with Human Services Designee for Transportation, Anthony Hodges, Human Services Designee Older Adults, Kathy Mauer, Human Services Designee for Disabled Adults, Susan Donaldson, ALP Director Designee, Kelly Sifford, Planning and Zoning Director, Kimberly Strong, Cabarrus Meals on Wheels Director Designee. So we have a few multiple service board provisions for Kathy Mauer. So the requesting action is to appoint designated agency members as indicated, including an exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy for Kathy Mauer. We also would have a motion to transfer Mary Whitman from a consumer representative to an at-large representative and to keep her term ending December 31st, 2015. A motion to transfer Betty Bab to an at-large position and to extend her term to end December 31st, 2015. A motion to transfer Gail Linker to an at-large position and keep her term ending December 31st, 2013. Sorry, I think I misspoke. Oh, Miss Bab, it's 2015. Motion to appoint James Polk and L. Scott Behringer to the, as at-large representatives for three-year terms, ending December 31st, 2016, and to, a motion to remove Cindy Smart, Department of Aging Representative, Beth Chrome, and Karen Allen, Meals on Wheels Representatives, from the roster and to thank them for their service.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's see. And Transportation Advisory Board. We've been requested to reappoint Julia Patterson, Cabarrus Health Alliance, Healthy Cabarrus, and Tony Harris County Safety Manager, to the TAB for three-year terms, ending June 30th, including an exception to the residency provision for both of them, and a motion to remove Justin Brons, Sharon Corpenning, and Ben Waring from the roster. And a motion to appoint Michael Smith to the TAB as a Cabarrus EMS Representative for a three-year term, ending June 30th, 2016, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also to note, we have an opening on the Transportation Advisory Board for someone who represents a visually impaired agency. Not that the agency is visually impaired, but an agency that works with visually impaired. I think that's the only, and we also have a vacant position on that board for a local clergy, so we would encourage persons of interest that fit those categories to please apply. Okay, I think we've gotten all the appointments done, and there are a number of reports for information, and at this time, I would ask if there are any updates that commission members have on, that's on boards or commissions that you serve on. Any general comments by board members tonight? I will take a point in privilege, please. Commissioner White's going to laugh at me, but that's okay, my husband may fuss at me when I get home. There are a lot of people that watch this TV show. I have a very good friend who no longer has a ring finger because the ring on her finger got caught on a shelf, and it had to be amputated. I have fat fingers, which means the wedding band that I got 30 years ago in September no longer fits my ring finger. So I have had comments made to my mother-in-law questioning the fact if my husband and I are still married. So I do want to tell everybody, we are married, most days happily. He'll chime in on that one. I am, I guess I can say I'm either too lazy or too cheap to go to a jeweler and have it enlarged and some contraption on it so that in the summer and the winter, it will fit in both seasons, depending on my hand. So because I've had questions, and it was directly related to this meeting being on TV, that my hand apparently moves, and someone noticed I didn't have a ring on there, so I want to dispel all of those rumors, if there are any, there's probably only one or two out there. Also, it is Commissioner White's birthday, and no one up here, or anyone in the chamber tonight, will take responsibility for the balloons that we have been enjoying. That goes with someone who he loves, a couple people that he loves dearly, and will be seen after the meeting. So happy birthday, Commissioner White. We appreciate the fact that you have given up your birthday evening to spend time with If there are no other comments or business, we now need a motion to convene in closed session. Correct? We don't? Okay. Yay, we don't need a closed session. So we have a motion to adjourn. And a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. We appreciate you being with us.